All right, good afternoon, everyone. If I could have your attention. Welcome to this meeting of the City Council. It is 4:30, and so I'd like to begin with a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then if we could have a roll call, please.
Me, Hamel.
Here.
Sean Bruce.
Here.
Brian, yeah?
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Wayne Baroana.
Here.
All right. Next item up is approval of the agenda.
So moved, support.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Bruce.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Baroana.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, at this point, we are at the public comments section of our meeting. I'd like to begin by reading a thank you that we received. Dear Sam and the City of Sheldon, on behalf of the Northwest Iowa Tractor Pullers, we want to sincerely thank you for allowing us to have our two tractor pulls on Saturday, September 5, and Sunday, September 6. Both days, we had over 50 tractors that participated in the pulls, as well as a great crowd of spectators. Thank you for allowing us to have the two pulls. We are truly grateful. Sincerely, Brian and Shar Wolber and families, on behalf of the Northwest Iowa Tractor Pullers. So glad to hear that was a good event for them.
Yeah.
Then, moving on. Are there any public comments at this time? And I don't see anyone that's logged into Zoom portion of it, so.
That's just the two of us, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, very good. All right, then let's move on to the consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve.
Support. Any discussion on any items there? If not, can have a roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Baroana.
Aye.
All right, we have no old or new business today, but Jared Johnson is with us for a report on, a little update on the O'Brian County EMA management plan. Thank you, Jared. Please step forward.
Brought a bunch of stuff with me. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Jared Johnson with the O'Brian County EMA. Yeah, it's been a while since I've been here in person, but I know we've spoken, you know, through webinar services throughout this past year. There have been several updates since I've last spoken with you. The first update I'm going to talk about is the current proclamation of disaster emergency. So the one that really affects us is the one that was issued on August 21. That extended several of the, like, the social distancing requirements for certain businesses through September 20, 11:59 PM on September 20. I haven't heard anything at the state level if there's going to be an extension on that. The social distancing recommendations for that were for, you know, restaurants, bars, mass gathering scenarios. So that is still in place. Those proclamations are located on the coronavirus Iowa website. There's been a few recent disaster proclamations as well, and those were in regards to a few select counties for bars in central and eastern Iowa. But yeah, those are available for everyone to view online. The current COVID statistics for our area, we are seeing a quite substantial increase over the last few weeks for our positive cases. Earlier today, we were at 272 positive cases. Our number recovered was at 158, and our number of deaths is still at eight. So we're urging individuals to still follow the COVID-19 recommendations of social distancing, if at all possible, and if you can't social distance, to wear a face mask. And for individuals that are feeling sick, you know, please reach out to your healthcare provider to see if it's suggested to go and get tested for COVID or to get the other types of tests, like we see for influenza A, B, strap, to see what potentially is going on with them. For the COVID-19 vaccine, we are starting to work on vaccination planning. On the IDPH website, they have added a vaccine tab, which right now, there is one PDF document that provides some vaccine information for the general public. So if individuals are wanting to learn a little bit more about what we know so far for the vaccine, I recommend that they go to the IDPH website and check out that document. They have set up a call center to answer basic vaccine questions. The number is 211. It's supposed to be staffed 24/7. So if individuals have a question, they can, they can call that number. But right now, we know some information, but we're still waiting on a lot of information from, from the state and also from the federal government. The CDC is working to put together our, what the templates get to be for which popul-, you know, which target populations they're going to want to have vaccines administered first. So we're waiting to hear from the state for what the CDC decides on that. Does anyone have any questions over vaccines?
Question.
Yeah.
We have the positive and the recovered. Do you have any number on how many were hospitalized or are hospitalized?
Yes, so the other day, so actually, on the coronavirus Iowa website, if you click on summary statistics and you scroll down the page, there is a link to a PDF that shows hospitalizations per county. So you can actually see the number of individuals that are hospitalized. That data, it can be slightly delayed, but on the 13th, there were three individuals hospitalized just in O'Brian County.
Okay.
So, yep, that is there for the public to view.
And speaking of county breakouts, seems like Sioux County has hit in a spike right now as far as the number of cases. Anything that you can attribute that to? And is it anything that we should be worrying about in particular?
Yeah, also, another data field that they added on that summary statistics is a positivity percentage, which O'Brian County, the last few days, has been around 15%. Sioux County has been over 24%. That looks at the last 14 days of tests, and they figure out an average of the number of individuals that were tested and the number of individuals that came back positive to formulate that positivity percentage. I'm not sure if it's, if they just have increased exposure situations, but.
Or could just be more tests?
Yeah, it could be more testing. And I've heard some feedback from a few other counties that there's, there are more individuals getting tested now than what we had seen in the past. So that could attribute to some of the increased case counts in our area. But yeah, the biggest thing is just for, it's, it's still here. So we want people to still be, to be cautious and to be thinking about it when they're out and about.
Couple of questions, Jared.
Yes.
Don't mind. I tend to wonder over in Sioux County, do the colleges and university testing, is that added to that as well, since they are residents at the college? Are they counted for Sioux County then?
Yes, there's, like, on the coronavirus Iowa website, there's not a, like, a separate breakdown for numbers at universities. I haven't really looked to see if, like, Northwestern or Dort, or even, like, NCC is reporting student positive cases. Some places are keeping that confidential.
Okay.
But.
So you don't know if those are in that number or not?
Correct, yeah. You can, like, when you go to the coronavirus Iowa website, you can actually select on the county. And when you do that, it takes away the other data for other counties and just shows that individual county data. And then on the right, there are subgroups. You can see the, like, the demographics for. Yeah, population, so.
And then my second observation, actually, is, is that there was a testing site, Lamar's, that it apparently is not available anymore. So it's directing you to go to your clinic as an option. Do you have any experience with that as far as, is there any information you could provide the public through this venue about them going to the clinic?
Sure. For local, you know, local availability for testing, you know, Sanford Sheldon has testing available. Individuals would need to call the clinic, possibly talk to their primary care provider. Mercy One in Primgar also has testing available, where an individual would have to call the hospital to, to get that lined up. There are a few test Iowa sites still active. There's one in Buena Vista County in Storm Lake that's still available for individuals to schedule a test online. And then also in Dickinson County, they have one set up as well. I heard that there were some extensions for how long those are going to be operating, and there has been some discussion of increasing the length of time that those are available to help decrease other testing loads for local healthcare facilities.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Good question. All right, but yeah, over the next few months, we definitely expect more vaccine information to start to become available. So we'll, we'll be on the lookout for that. The next item I want to talk about is our, the county's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Our plan was last approved by FEMA in 2015. This plan gets reviewed every five years. Once it's done, we submit it to FEMA for review. It's, it's a plan that we have to have in place for when hazard mitigation grant funds become available. So if we have the plan in place and there are grant funds available, communities can work on certain projects, such as, like, an outdoor warning siren, possibly a generator for shelter location. So we're in the process right now of reviewing our plan. I have sent out the, I've sent the Sheldon section to Angie and to Sam for review. What I need from the city is just to review the plan that was last approved, double-check contacts, and also double-check information within the plan to see if there's anything that needs to be updated. There is a list of natural disasters in the plan that is produced through a formula. So that is just something you need to re, just, kind of just glance over. There is also a list of possible project ideas. That list is important. If the city were to look at doing a project in the future, they will look to see if that project has been pre-identified in the plan. So I just encourage you to look through that list and see if there's anything that's not included in the list that could potentially be a project idea within the next five years. From what I've heard from Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management, they like to look for somewhat smaller projects. I know there are some communities that have put together, like, multi-hundred thousand dollar, like, you know, water projects or work on, like, a really large tornado shelter for, like, a gym. But they, it sounds like they do like to look for some of the smaller projects first. But it is something that's, it's just, it's good to review. And there are also critical facilities that are listed within your plan, and that's another list to, to check to see if there's any other types of critical facilities within Sheldon that you'd like to add. And then what we'll be doing is we'll be taking all of the updated plans from each city, along with O'Brian County's plan, and then we'll be sending that to Northwest Iowa Plan Development for review. They're our planning contractor. Our plan will also get put together with Sioux County's plan and Osceola County's plan, because when we submitted the grant application to help pay for the production of the plan, at that point in time, the state was only accepting regional multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plans. So, so this, this time, instead of having an individual county one, it's going to be a regional one, but it's going to, it's going to look very similar to, you know, each county having their own and just putting together into one. So that's something to look, look out for over the, just the next few weeks. Another piece of information I wanted to share with you while I was here is the floodplain management program. So I believe, Angie, have you guys received the copies of your flood insurance rate maps? There should have been some printed copies that were sent in by mail directly from FEMA, along with a letter.
I have, but maybe I want to.
Okay.
September 23, planning commission agenda for fall.
Okay, perfect. So in June, FEMA sent out the flood insurance rate, flood insurance rate maps that are going to be becoming effective on December 17. Those maps are available for individuals to view on the FEMA Mapping Service Center, and I can send out that link. But it's going to be time for the city, it's going to be time for the city to review the floodplain management ordinance that was put together in the past. If there is a question over, if you would like to see a template for a new floodplain management ordinance, I do have one available. My contact has been Ken Boma through the Iowa DNR. He's been really nice to work with. He has an updated ordinance that cities and counties can use, along with an updated resolution and then also an updated application for, for building within a community. Once that is done, right now, the county's looking at creating a new floodplain management program. So O'Brian County has actually not been a part of the National Flood Insurance Program in the past, and part of the reasoning for that is rural territory hasn't been mapped before. So now that there's actually a map that we can use, we're looking at the steps right now of establishing an ordinance and resolution and creating a floodplain management program. And we're also looking at assigning a person within O'Brian County to be our floodplain management administrator, and that person would help handle local permits. If somebody were to build within, like, a 100-year flood zone, they'd have to go through the DNR through their permit process, and then they would have to also go through the county's local permit process. So that's all in progress right now. And then if the supervisors do decide to go through with creating that program and the potentials there to join the National Flood Insurance Program and make additional flood insurance available for individuals in, in the county, which would be nice, especially after the flooding that we've seen the last few years. So all this kind of, that's in progress right now, and we're, we're hoping to get a lot of this done within the next few months. But yeah, I'll be sending additional stuff over to Angie and Sam for review and to Todd and to the other communities as well, just to remind everyone about the, the maps that are becoming effective and where to get the information, and also where to help distribute information to the public about them. All right, does anyone else, any other questions for me? Otherwise, yeah, things are staying busy. It hasn't slowed down, and as our cases go up, it, yeah, it's, it's just, it's staying steadily busy. So I always, I hope people continue to be safe and to reach out if you have questions. Local Public Health is available to help answer questions, and I'm available as well.
All right, thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Chief Birch is with us. You're up next for your report.
Good afternoon. I've been here five years now, or five years.
It just seems like it.
So I've been here about five months now, and I've been kind of assessing the department. And coming from the outside, I can kind of gauge it against other places. We've been at seven officers now since 2003. As you guys know, we applied for the COPS grant right before I got hired, and we didn't, didn't get it. But one of the things, you know, that we talked about is adding an additional officer at some point. So I kind of wanted to give you guys some statistics. Right now, we are handling probably about half the calls for service for the county. That would include the sheriff's office, Sanborn, Hartley, Sutherland, Paulina, County Constellation, the state agencies that have arrests or anything in our county. We're covering half of those calls for service. We went from 2012 at 1,745 to usually around 2,500 calls for service. We're up to 2,000 so far to date. That also doesn't count normal things like paperwork, citizen contacts, interviews, investigations, phone calls. With technology the way it is, our investigations are a lot more in-depth. Just to give you an example, a couple of months ago, I worked at least 22 hours myself for a search warrant. Three officers were tied up for five to six hours on that search warrant, which leaves no one covering the street. You know, one of the, one of the things that was brought up was this, a lot of, the public doesn't see us out and about. Part of that I can correct, but the other part is, is if we got cases like this, it's, it's hard to have people out in the street. And then another thing is too, is with the, years of service that we have, a lot of guys have vacation, excuse me, personal time built up, sick time, things like that. So it leaves a lot of single car coverage. I don't know if you guys noticed that we're, well, so right now, we're down one officer, obviously, with a retirement, and we're down one with an injury. So we're at the bare bones right now. We're working with one guy per shift, besides me covering a bit too, so. Some of the other things I kind of wanted to go over too were, normally, the goal is 2,000, correction, two officers per thousand. Des Moines, somewhere like Des Moines, at 1.62 officers per thousand. Council Bluffs is at 1.74. Sheldon, right now, is operating at 1.34 per thousand residents. I have statistics for, like, Esterville, Shenandoah, Manchester, Glenwood. They're all similar size. Esterville's at 12 officers, Shenandoah's at 10, Manchester's at 10, Glenwood's at 10. And they all include extra command staff too, like lieutenants, sergeants, things like that. They all have K-9 units, which is something I eventually would like to get. So just to kind of summarize, at some point, I feel we're going to have to hire an eighth officer. You know, I don't know if that'll be the budget talks this year for July 2021, and in reality, we should probably be at nine officers. So just to kind of give you guys some stuff to think about when budget talks come up. That's just kind of the quick and dirty. Any questions I can answer?
What you're saying is being the most prevalent type of incident that you're running into?
Obviously drugs. You know, when they say drugs are a victimless crime, that's not true, because usually it ends up with something else happen, you know? Whether it be property crime, whatever. We've had a rash of car thefts and burglaries lately. I don't know why. But, you know, when we do do search warrants or whatever, so, you know, I got an officer right now going through Facebook, 25,000 pages worth of Facebook information. That's time-consuming. And unfortunately, that takes a guy off the street too when we do that, so.
And of those drug-related offenses, would it be safe to say that meth is the primary driver of that?
Yep, still is, yep.
So, I don't know, I've, I've seen a lot of the statistics out there, and they're shocking, they're alarming. And it's something that is really of concern to me personally, and I think should be to everyone here in this room, that it's not a local issue. It's not, it's, it's a, it's a nationwide issue, and we're seeing the ramifications of it right here at home. So I guess my question to you is, what more can we be doing to try and stem that?
Well, I think the, the big thing comes down to just trying to get more guys on the street and probably a K-9 at some point.
And I know that you've been hiring for a new officer. How has that process been going, and what kind of feedback are you getting as far as maybe, if, if there have been candidates that have passed? If we're not getting the volume in? And now, I, get me, don't get me wrong. This is a terrible time in our nation's history to be a police officer. And I don't envy your position, and I can't imagine that the numbers of people that would want, want to jump in are now starting to have maybe second thoughts about donning the uniform. So I guess I just am more wondering if there is a certain, like, a certain answer that you're getting over and over again. Is it just money? Is it the fact that there's just less numbers, period? Is there some sort of, of underlying argument that we're not addressing as far as staffing goes to get those numbers to where they should be?
No, I don't think so. It seems like everybody's having that problem right now, staffing, getting those numbers. I'm hoping to make a conditional offer later this week, so we should fill that other spot hopefully in the next month or so. But it's just, you know, I think we've been operating with seven guys for so long, it's kind of been the norm. But at some point, to stem this, we're going to have to have more guys on the street.
Yeah, because, you know, we throw money, and I don't mean that to sound in a derogatory way, but we throw money at community development, at trying to build new infrastructure, roads, schools, all that stuff. But it doesn't mean anything if we can't stem the virus that's happening here in our own town. So I just want to, I guess I want to say for you to know that, whatever it takes, please be, be open with us so that we can have that conversation and see, you know, to, to try and, and meet this to its end, because for our town to thrive, we need its citizens to thrive, and this is, this is a cancer that needs to be eradicated.
I agree. I appreciate it.
I just want you to know that, that we're, we're, we're here for you. That's really all I can say.
Okay, appreciate it. Any other questions? You mentioned the Office Three Officer, five to six hours piece for working on a search warrant. Right. Does it require an officer to do the kind of work that's being done? Or can some of that be shifted over to maybe an administrative-type position? It requires an officer usually. So I mean, you know, if you have someone sitting on a house for five to six hours to wait for that search warrant to get done, you got an officer writing that search warrant, and then you have two or three officers serving the search warrant.
At what level does, like, DCI become involved?
If it's a major case, we'll invite DCI, but it's still our responsibility, so.
Sure.
They'll do a lot of work, and they'll help out a ton, but it's still ultimately our responsibility, so.
Is there a, overlap with the county?
Not a lot, they're pretty busy themselves, so. I mean, they'll come and help us out, but, you know, we work very well with them. But, you know, they got, they're, they got to cover too, so. So it, yeah, it gets hard. I mean, they'll come and help us out and be in town, but when they're covering, what, 400 square miles, it's pretty hard for them to help us out sometimes.
And you hear stories of, that are some, I, I, some towns in Sioux County that aren't even getting coverage, you know, that they'll go an entire day without an officer going through, which just, to me, is mind-boggling. So it's just, you can see that it's a, it's a systemic issue that we need to try and find an answer to, because.
Well, and like I said, I think one of the biggest problems is, is we've been hit with big cases lately, and that it's time-consuming.
Are you seeing some good resolution to those big cases, or is it that far along yet?
No, we're getting there.
Good, good. So at least you feel like your, your effort's worth it.
Yeah.
One more question I had stemmed from something Wayne said. Where are we at in terms of applicants for that vacant position right now in the department?
So I'm, I'm thinking by the end of the week, I'll have a conditional offer for someone.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, and that's just it. We didn't get a ton of applicants, but we, we got some pretty good ones, so. And it only takes one, so.
Yep, good.
Hello, Chief. It's good to see you. I haven't seen you for a pandemic or whatever, so.
Right.
Yeah, but thanks for coming today. It's good to hear from you, it's good to hear what's going on in the department, and appreciate that much. I think I've heard the answer to my question. I'm going to ask it just in case I don't understand it, the full scope of it myself. But are there third-party resources or providers that could help you in the gap of the process of building the department up that we need to, that we need to think of and, and support you and the department with, if they are available?
As in, someone helping out with?
I wish I could be more detailed, and I'm hoping that, that the question would spur, would spur that thought within you. But, but if it does.
I, I mean, I know one of the biggest things is, is obviously we'll apply for COPS grant again if it comes up. You know, and they cover the, most of the wages for three years for an officer. You know, I, given Sam, what, who I saw got awarded the contracts, and there was quite a few in Omaha, or in Iowa, so hopefully, next year, we can be one of them. That would help.
Right.
And how's your reserve plan going, or your reserve program going?
So we'll have two reserve officers, hopefully, by the end of the month, up and running.
Very good.
So.
I just know in the, in the private business sector, that if you're short an engineer, you can easily find an engineering third-party group, or if you're short a salesman, you can find a salesman. third party group, or if you're short a salesman, you can find a salesman.
That's because people actually want to be engineers and salesmen.
Yeah, that's why.
I mean, there's maybe some options, but it, it could be difficult. You know, whether part time or whatever we'd have to do.
I just want to make sure if we, outside the box is an answer, certainly supportive of that, so.
You know, and once we're back up to full staff, that'll help. But yeah, it's just when you have these big cases, they take up a lot of time.
You need box.
And that was one of the things I heard when I applied was is that unfortunately they don't, public doesn't see us enough. And like I said, I can fix some of those problems, but some of them stem from major cases.
Right.
So it's not fun doing some of these ones. They take up a lot of time and they're, they're mentally fatiguing too.
Sure. Well, thank you again for.
Appreciate it.
Chief, oh, go ahead. Can you cover everything that would be involved with the K nine as far as money, training, equipment?
So I've came from the last department I was at had two K nines. And the majority of it you can usually raise by private donations, you know, doing fundraisers and stuff. It's the vehicle that costs money.
Would you need a whole new vehicle?
Yep. You know, and, and I can think outside the box there. If we do that route, you can usually find a used K nine unit pretty reasonable.
Do you still need a man to man it, right?
Right.
And how long would that take somebody out of training?
Quite a while, depends where you go, but anywhere from eight to 12 weeks. So. It's definitely an option that we need to look at.
I, I've heard good comments since you've taken over both public wise, you're doing a good job. I think it challenged us as a council, also challenges the, the police department to come up with a plan for a five year vision. And I think it challenges us as a council to try to come up the way to fund that program. And I think this is a public service that we need to fund. Some of the stuff they deal with, I think we'd all be shocked. That goes on in Sheldon, Iowa, and I think we need to invest in our police department. They need to have a vision. I think the chief can give us a vision here. So I challenge him, I challenge us as a council, Sam, to come up with that vision and us as a council to go follow through on it, so.
Appreciate that.
All right, no further questions. Thank you, Scott, for sharing that with us today.
I probably thought that was going to be like a 30 second deal.
I did. All right, we'll be gone. Sam, is there anything you want to report on at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. So on the note of the police department, I just want to publicly say thank you to Elaine Bogard for all of her work. Started in December of 1985 with the city for a long time. She's going to be deeply missed.
Do we have to let her go?
Uh, no, I told her I lost the letter of resignation. This is actually the third position that I've worked with her. So anyway, so we're, we've got that position posted. You know, on the note of what Chief Birch just talked about, and I have talked about several different items that I, I've asked him to help prioritize. One would be, you know, at some point, do we need a full time administrative position? This is in no particular order, by the way. Another is additional ranks such as sergeant or lieutenant. Another would be additional officers. Another would be prioritizing where the negotiations fit into that in terms of wages and competitiveness. Try to do all four of those at once. It's very difficult. We, something that's on us, him and I and others internally to develop a plan and work with you on it. The other item that I have is a link to the agenda today, a draft amendment to the, our ordinance regarding livestock. Our current ordinance says it is unlawful for a person to keep livestock within the city except by written consent of the council or accept in compliance with the city zoning regulations. And I am proposing that we strongly consider removing eight words from section 5505, which is to remove the except by written consent of the council or. I believe that your voice in the process is developing the, crafting the zoning code and our other city ordinances and not individual requests. People do not come to you for individual shed permits, deck or fence permits. We do not believe that you should be receiving individual animal requests either. We have another one pending. The challenge with that one is, is that the coop has already been constructed. It's eight feet high. We have, we have a fence code that's a maximum of, of six feet in a residential zone. And there's, there's a real gray area there and it's one of the reasons why it should be a zoning issue and not individual hearings in front of the city council. We also all know that I am very thorough to a fault. But I also believe that if I am thorough, it makes the, the meetings run, run faster. You saw that we, we voted on some, we voted on some very important, large issues at the beginning of this agenda, all in one vote. And that's how I like to do business. And so we, we need to take another look at how we do business. I believe that we have a very talented planning and zoning commission that can come up with new rules that ultimately you would sound off on. And then those, those hearing, those animal requests with the need to go to the board of adjustment. So I'd like to open it up now for your, your feedback on that. And then if you're in support, you can put this on a future agenda like October 7th, have three readings on it and go from there.
Sam, you said really early on in your tenure that most of these, if not all of these ordinances have been sorely out of date. And that has not been updated in several years. So now how, how are you proposing about making these updates? Is that something that the planning and zoning commission identifies their particular, the action items that they want to try and adopt? Is that something that you go and make and propose wholesale changes to the entire zoning code? Or are, what, what are your thoughts on that?
So the zoning code is a pretty good code. It was adopted in 2010. City's code is, was adopted in 1998 and is a very old code, because a lot of it was carryover from prior to that. So that's the one that is a lot of update, of updating to do. And in, in that code that we're working with Simmering and Quarry and Iowa codification on, I've already had this particular code on the radar screen. And so whether we address it as a one off now, which is real easy, I've already got the draft done, it took me five minutes, or address it as part of the larger code, that, that can wait. But the, the zoning ordinance, you know, society's values have changed in the last 10 years. When the, when the zoning code was put into place, urban chickens, there were, there weren't a lot of requests for those. But, but now it's becoming something that a lot of other communities are, are, are looking at. Well, one of the reasons why I believe it's important to close the door on those requests coming to the council, look at two of the three current requests, two involve ducks. So do you really want a situation where somebody comes to the board of adjustment and asks for chickens? And then comes, has to come to the city council to ask for ducks? It really should all be a zoning issue. But you know, we have planning commission meets several times a year and their next meeting is stacked up. I've got three really important issues. I've got swimming pools, I've got urban poultry and urban livestock, and then also sheds. Those three main things, plus the floodplain update. But other than that, I mean, we have some tweaks that we need to make to the zoning code from time to time, but it's, it's a good code. Can I answer your question?
Yes.
I would just say, Sam, I think the reasons that you stated in regards to making that change are solid. And, and I'll be the first one to admit, I have no idea of the relationship between what they need to build for a coop or whatever for their, for, for their requested approval to keep chickens on their property and how that relates to a fence height or, or a distance from the home or from property line and stuff like that. And I think because the code reads as it does right now, it leaves a gap in how we manage the city in regards to that. It would just be like people come in and asking for driveway locations and stuff like that. So I, I agree, it does, I think it functionally and will serve not only the city, but it will serve the residents better by having it in the zoning committee. So for that reason, I, I fully support that. And, and let, let, let the codes take care of that part of it. We'll deal with the others.
I guess my only comment on the way, on the change you're proposing would be, is that going to give you another level of nuisance letters that are going to be sent out? Or have to be sent out? Because right now it doesn't allow for, I mean, in the city code, there is no Plan B or an opt out, an exception to the rule. So the process, is the process going to be, I mean, we're talking, now we know where, we, we kind of have an idea of where, where we're at with it. Five, 10 years down the road with a new, new council and perhaps a new administrator, whatever the case may be. They see this now, do you, the only way to implement it is to go through the nuisance process where they get a letter saying you need to get rid of the chickens or you need to appeal to the zoning?
Well, the, one challenge, Mayor, is you can end up with a frustrated board of adjustment if you have a hearing for each one. So my prior town, Cherokee, they dealt with the same issue. Their coding, their word, their code, word, their code was worded exactly like ours. And instead of going to a board of adjustment process and a special exception, they have recently opened it up to have a simple permit granted by the, by the city administrator. That also has its appeal. Challenge we have in Sheldon is you have whole neighborhoods that are in industrial zoning. Almost the entire neighborhood west of Old 60 is in industrial zoning. So it, it isn't as, it's not as easy to do that. And when you do that, it also doesn't provide good notification to the neighbors. And so you do, you go through the process of having good notification where I as zoning administrator write a letter for, on behalf of the board of adjustment. It isn't then a mystery as to what's being requested. But this, this latest request, 14 year old girl, and I asked her to talk to her neighbors. She talked to her neighbors and gave me a piece of paper with all the signatures and at the top it says, you know, we support chickens at X address. Well, I had to be careful about not upsetting a teenage girl. The reality is, is that she's requesting chickens and ducks and already has a coop that's eight feet high. And so that's one of the reasons why you need to go to the board of adjustment. So the letters, Mayor, it doesn't matter whether you say in the letter, this code is at stake or this code is at stake. That's a simple verbiage change in the letter. My nuisance process would basically stay the same. It's where you steer it. Do you, do you appeal the violation to the city council? Do you appeal the violation to the, the board of adjustment? You have great zoning code and really good board of adjustment. I believe that that's the process that should be used. Can I answer your question?
So the sore answer would be no. It would not increase your workload as a city administrator. Okay.
Something I would, excuse me, something I guess I would be interested in knowing. How many towns around Northwest Iowa simply don't allow any, period? I guess that would be of interest to me because I can envision a problem with this thing growing and growing and growing and becoming, I guess if everybody in town wants one, then it's not a problem, but I, I don't know. At some point, it, it concerns me.
If I could answer that question, attempt two, Mayor?
Yeah.
So I have, I have spoken with my contact at Iowa Codification or Simmering and Quarry and I, I've asked her that question without asking for the list. They said, you know, are there towns going through this too? And she says, yes, a lot of them have that same language that Cherokee and Sheldon did unless otherwise approved by the council. And a lot of them are now changing that. They're either going to a straight permit process based on certain zones, or they're going to a hearing process. A hearing process is the most rigid of the two processes. So I will lay out all those options with the planning commission and, you know, they, they may opt and there's advantages to doing this to say, you know, instead of saying zoning, you could say houses in the residential or houses in any zone, if they're not a duplex, if they're a single dwelling, you could, you could define it that way. I prefer to have a special exception process so you can have good notification. Because otherwise one of you calls me and says, Sam, why did you issue this permit? And once I've issued it, it's hard to unissue it.
Another question I'd have, Sam, and maybe you can't answer it at this point. But once we would adopt, if we were to adopt this new code, is that then the code for all homeowners, all landowners within the city limits? Does that, does that start anew? Does that get rid of any past agreements or grandfathered in agreements and stuff like that? Or is, or are we still got gray area there? And if you can't answer it today, that's fine, but I think that's a hanging chad out there in this issue.
So Councilman, is your concern what happens to existing livestock within the city?
Or livestock agreements within the city?
So to your latter question, the ones that you as a council have addressed, remember, were all with certain time periods that are relatively short. In my initial opinion, those would or should be honored for that limited time period. As to livestock that may be in the city elsewhere, there are very few instances in our zoning code that have districts that specifically allow livestock to begin with. So if they're there, they're either already grandfathered in.
I guess that's where my question probably lies, Mike, is for the ones that are grandfathered in.
And so they would continue to be grandfathered in unless and until they become nonconforming or obsolete under the code provisions.
So the code in itself won't reset that then?
Yeah, the code already has language that dictates when a nonconforming use that's grandfathered in or a nonconforming structure no longer gets that treatment.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then to kind of go along with Tom's, would it, would this new ordinance eliminate residential, commercial? Or terrorier, commercial will eliminate and just be a blanket?
Not necessarily. So for example, under your existing zoning code, we have like a suburban residential district that has certain livestock uses that are either permitted or special exception. But it only applies within that district. It doesn't have to be for every district. That is something the planning and zoning commission can discuss and recommend, you know, what type of livestock uses would be permitted either as a principal use or a special permitted use in that particular district.
So residential per se can't have chickens, but somebody that owns industrial, commercial, they can have them then?
That is an option.
Okay. See, I'm, I'm zero tolerance, zero livestock, zero chickens. You eliminate the problem. You eliminate the problem cuz this is just gonna create ongoing issues. We have it now. I got calls, chickens running loose, chicken noises here. Who's gonna enforce it? Go to zero tolerance, be done, no livestock in town. Plain and simple. If you wanna have livestock, move out in the country. You live in town to have livestock. I don't think we want the Police Department to go chase chickens, pigs.
Chicken man.
Watching that. Or waste Sam's time. Our volunteers on planning and zoning and on the Board of Adjustment, they're gonna get tired of having issues with chickens. Then you're gonna have people not wanting to get on those boards because they're gonna have to deal with chickens. Let's just end it once and for all. No livestock.
Something to consider.
So, that's my two sets. And that's how I'll vote? No chickens, no livestock.
Any other comments? Anything else from you, Sam?
Did you, did you need direction on that? That draft ordinance?
I'm gonna see how things go with P&amp;Z and then... I'm going to see how things go with P&amp;Z next week, but, and then there's two, there's three weeks now between, so.
Okay.
I, I am thinking that I would put it on, depending on that, how that goes, I would put this ordinance on for, for first reading on October 7.
Okay. I, I think it would be good for us to hear what Pete had requested. If there's some idea of us understanding how many other communities have a zero tolerance policy. I guess that would go towards, uh, other comments made as well, so.
All right, let's move on. Uh, Todd, do you have anything that you'd like to report on or comment?
No, thank you.
Kurt?
I'll sit there and answer.
Uh, Mike, anything else from you?
No, thank you.
Angie?
No.
Okay. Uh, const to my left?
Nothing.
I just wanna thank the Street Department for all the work they've been putting in this week cleaning up junk.
Pete? Okay. How about to my right? No.
I just, uh, wanna thank Jared for coming today and not only for today, but for the work that he, the effort he puts forth and the way he does it. Appreciate it very much and thank you again, so.
All right, and I have nothing further, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll take one of those to support. Roll call, please.
Kamal?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Eggers?
Hi.
Vermona?
Hi.
And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Goodbye.